All right, it's seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and get started. We've got a very packed agenda this evening. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. We will observe our traditional moment of silent reflection followed by the pledge, please. Thank you very much. I pledge the
Pledge of the Institute of Light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, under recognized guests. Dennis, you wish to address council this evening?
Yes, please. Set the camera here. This is only going to take a minute or two. I know it's on the agenda. You got the D five, D seven, and D eight. Those things are already on the challenge for community board. The only one running the board now, and I got them up there about two weeks ago. Just to fill you in on that. Now, the reason I'm here is because the regular camera person is stuck in traffic because of last night's accident with the essence bill. But I also want to talk to you about one thing. I'm on my own on this one. I'm by myself on this. Is there any way the city could resurface the street, Canola Street between Main Street and, say, Wendy's before November? The reason I ask is that's the parade route for the veterans parade. And I'm concerned about the older veterans walking down that pretty rough.
Mayor, if I might interject, this came up in our supervisors' meeting this week. And the reason we won't be repaving that entire section, there's a lot of utility work that has to be done beneath that surface for the final paving, and Ethan can address this a bit further. There is conversation about a coating being put on it at some point. So I think, Ethan, you're going to research that?
Yeah, but I've been in my notes tonight.
Okay, it's in the notes tonight. So, and I hadn't had time to talk with the mayor about that. But yet, for us to go ahead and do a complete paving on that would be a huge waste of funds.
Well, you have to work on it. There's no sense in doing it. But to put a little something on it. I was concerned about the old veterans tripping and falling.
No, we share your concern, and it's been on the plans for quite some time. But as Mr. Sanders said, we typically like to do all the utility work underneath before we then smooth it over.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
All right, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Jim D.
I'll be D. As you know, we always kind of talk about food. Usually it's about barbecue tonight. It's not.
You talk about it, but you don't bring it.
I'm working on that. We'll have to meet a little bit more succinctly there with the barbecue. This evening, I just want to mention to you our fundraiser. Next year is our 10th anniversary. Hard to believe, started in 2015. So we like, we love our sponsors. We love what the city provides and everyone else, but we try to take care of ourselves just as well. So this is our first of what we hope will be an annual fish fry fundraiser. Don't have anyone else doing all you can eat anything. So some of you probably were, I know Rob was, at Stonewall two or three years ago. And we had a gentleman called Fresh Catch West Virginia out of the Morefield-Martensburg area up in there, who was one of our food vendors. And when he came to us, he said, gosh, this is a barbecue. Is anyone going to eat fish? Well, he sold out over and over and over. Of course, he had fish, he had shrimp, he had a lot of crabs and things. So he's actually coming from Morefield area to do, he's not a local person. So we have someone coming in that really has a fish market, and he has a fish restaurant. So he really knows what he's doing. So just wanted to give you the flyers, sending out news releases. I dropped off some with the folks here, and then I'll send out some more. Just happen to have tickets in case anyone's interested. We will do takeout orders. You can just drive around. They did that with the ribs. You can pick up your orders to go, and that's fine. But kids' meals are $10, adults are $20 if you buy them in advance. If you wait till the last minute, it goes up $5 because it just gives us a better idea of how many we're preparing for. So hope you can come. Hope you can enjoy some fish. Pass along the word. So as you can see, it's a pretty good menu. It's all you can eat fish, fries, homemade coleslaw. We're not doing canned stuff, the homemade dressing. A little mini ears of corn, a dessert, coleslaw. Yeah, the coleslaw dessert and a bottle of water. And Robbie Martin will have the bar at the Pavilion open, so you get soft drinks, adult beverages. We'll have cornhole bags out, so you can throw some cornhole. And just hopefully a nice, hopefully the weather holds out, it'll be a nice evening, some good food and fellowship, and hopefully raise some funds for our 10th anniversary in 2025.
What's the date?
October 11th, Friday, October 11th. It was the 4th. We had to make a move, and that was just a logistical thing, but most people weren't even aware of that. So Friday, 11th. It's four to seven, so you have ballgames. I think that night is a Lewis County game with Buckhannon, so they can always pick up their meal to go and then go into the game plenty of time. There's no WVU game that weekend. Well, I think it's away. But Friday evening wouldn't hurt anyway. So we just hope you come and enjoy some fish and pass along, let other people know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When I first looked at the flyer, at first I thought it was something to do with like a like a charity event at Buffalo Wild Wings for the color scheme, you know? All right, well, everything looks good. Jerry, you did not mark yes or no. Is there anything you want to bring to us, evening?
Nope.
All right. We have a proclamation this evening. I could invite Erica and Elisa up front here.
And I'll join you.
And, oh, yeah, and Mr. Sanders, who's on the Colonial Theater Board. Where is Elisa? Oh, there she is.
Oh.
I could have told her to stand up.
Could be a part of it.
That's why I wanted to get as far away. She might be small, but she's mighty. All right, this is a mayor's proclamation to celebrate the Colonial Arts Center's 100th anniversary. This is whereas the building has housed moments of joy, entertainment, and nostalgia for citizens of Upsher County and surrounding areas. Formerly known as the Colonial Theater and later the Cinema Four, the Colonial Arts Center Board dedicated and continued on with the legacy of this building for our current and our future community. And whereas on the month of September 1924, Garland West began the legacy pursuing the arts, cultural promotion, and entertainment in the city of Buckhannon for the next 36 years. And whereas Gray Barker, acclaimed author, carried on the torch of the legacy for nearly a decade, filling the ears and minds of patrons with stories of lore and lie from the written and the cinema. And whereas this building found new commitment from patrons and to share stories, laughs, and jolly for the next score. And whereas the Colonial Arts Center intention is to bring the residents closer to harmony and union with our city. And whereas the Colonial Theater promotes the community in action, local culture, and through appreciation of communal expression and voice. And whereas the Colonial Arts Center, I'm sorry, Colonial Arts Theater is dedicated to providing the community with a venue for modern, classical, and mystic and beyond. Now, therefore, I, mayor of the city of Buckhannon, do hereby resolve that we, the Colonial Arts Center Board, I guess that's you all, not necessarily me, of Buckhannon, West Virginia, do hereby ask that you join the celebration of the rejuvenation of the Colonial Arts Center for the continued presence in our community for generations to come for the entire month of September 2024. And I sign this, and it has the official seal on it. So.
Add a chair there. You're going to hold it with the microphone.
Here we go.
Actually, I think she was, is Mayor in the middle? Or we want to? Alex in the middle. Yeah.
And make sure you put your camera down some.
Rob, I bet you got a stool.
Okay. Break. One, two, three.
All right. Anything you want to say? You or Erica or Randy?
We appreciate your recognition. We're excited about the facility. Many things have already happened there and are going to continue to happen.
Hi, there is Elisa.
Best speech of the evening, right there. There we go. Thank you. Frame it. All right. I do not believe that we have anybody else that wishes to address the board or the council this evening. So we're going to move right along and go into our Department of Board reports. And we will begin with a much younger, much better looking Jerry Arnold. I wrote it down. Good evening, Ethan.
Good evening. How are you all?
Very well. How are you all?
Good. So the street department bid a small sidewalk repair project on South Porter Street. It was a request for an entrance into property along the street there. Then we ended up extending a little bit to update some more failing sidewalks. We also completed the first core of the curbs along Ritchie Street. So that project's moving along. We're going to try and do the next round of paving, mid to late next week on that and continue with the curbs after that. And the park is, the pickleball courts are just about finished. We put the third coat and hopefully final coat of the plush paint over it today. Tomorrow, I believe they're going to try and paint the lines on it, get the posts up, and finish backfilling around the edges, tapering it down. So it's a nice transition. Basketball court has been backfilled. We need to get it sealed and paint the lines, and then it'll be complete also. And waste department, they purchased a new skid steer as a used piece of equipment that was out in Pittsburgh. They got a pretty good deal on that, and it will be arriving tomorrow. For sanitary sewer, they completely finished the sanitary side of the Island Avenue project. All the restoration and everything moved out there. We had a few sinkers pop up last month. I think we had four of them. So both of the crews have been trying to keep up with repairing those. Lower drive is also continuing to move along. We have about three or three quarters of that project complete. And the clarifier of the plan is still under guidance and significant maintenance. It's epoxy coating the interior walls and sandblasting the wires and general maintenance needs done every about 10 years. Water department is also continuing to move on Island Avenue. They jumped back to sections, about a 200-foot section that they skipped while we were finishing up in there. Other than that, the main line is about complete. They'll start some of their connections before it's along. The lead copper surveys for the EPA, Kelly told me they are now about 90% complete. We had better resolved, I think, to respect them as far as the infrastructure giving to the houses. And the high service pumps are waiting to be installed. And in engineering, the tenor turn booster station has a three-month trial period currently going on. The transfer switch has been rewired so the skate can operate with it. The FEMA grant, one, the contractors and the process have acquired the necessary materials for the change of scope and has made the extended construction period by two months. For the stocker use center, floor replacement, the bit package is being prepared, and the existing gym floor style will be replaced with vinyl after it's sealed off. And it is 90% complete also. The WBDOH TAP grant on Morton Avenue, the agreement between the state and the city is being presented tonight for their consideration. If that is approved, then we will move forward on the engineering and surveying of the project area. The sanitary sewer for North Focus is complete and waiting for the drawings from the contractor once we receive them. That's the last bit of information we need. And the CMH development, the health department approved the permits for that project this week. And we are ordering materials and looking to start those extensions in late winter this year or early spring next year.
Any questions for Ethan? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Up next is Barb with Finance Report. And while we have her up, we want to go ahead and take care of our 2024-11 budget revision, which is under F six. We could do that.
First, on your balances in the enterprise funds, as August 31st, waste collection board, money market, and checking is $1,790,001.19. Your CD and savings was $318,996, plus there's a letter of credit for $64,000. Water board, money market, and checking is $992,160. And there's working capital and savings with a total of $907,761. Sanitary board, money market, and checking, $836,531, with working capital and CDs of $463,618. Stormwater fund, money market, and checking is $194,825. And we've been working on the general fund financial statement for year end 6/30/24. Jeremy Drennan, our CPA, helps compile most of our information in the proper format that is required for the mandatory advertisement. Once that comes back from the accountant, Amby will add the vendor list, and it needs to be advertised in a class one legal ad. The mayor, recorder, and at least two members of council will need to certify that document. On the Colonial Arts Center, the Elvis Tribute Show was sold out on Sunday. Everybody had a really good time. If you haven't seen him, you should go see him. He did a really good job. And then your stockard activity is attached, and approximately 1,010 needs throughout the month of August.
Okay.
And then on your notables of payment of bills, there's $4,260.60 to Atco International. That was for weed killer and bee spray. $4,080 to Benjamin Lee Ayersman for mowing of city lots. $2,720.79 was to J.T. Martin Company, and that was for fire extinguishers for the Colonial Arts Center. And then $2,000 to Joe Tennant for a used man lift for the CAC and the event center. That cost was split between the two. And that's all I have for the bills.
Okay.
Ready for your budget revision.
Yep. Council, you have for you a budget revision. This is F six under strategic. This is resolution 2024-11.
Okay. You have a contingency for council, $678,290. We are going to move $443,864 from that, which will leave you a balance of $234,426. So we're going to be moving $8,143 of that to the mayor's supply line. That is to cover where council approved the expense for the promotional items for Longsby. And then we'll be moving $15,000 to street department capital outlet. That's for the 2024 Ram roll-off truck that council approved for street department to buy. And then we're moving $418,000 into street paving. And that's for three paving projects. Cleveland Avenue, which is $263,000. Franklin Street, which is $111,000. And East Main Street is for $264,000. And you do have the South Canola on there, but that was already budgeted for. And then we're moving, where I noted that we got the fire extinguishers for the CAC. That was not in the budget, so we're moving $2,721 to the theater building for the fire extinguishers. And that's all I have.
Any questions relative to the budget revision? All right. I entertain a motion that we approve the budget revision noting that it is a resolution. We will need to do a roll call. But is there a motion to approve? Motion by Rigger, second by who? Thomas. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right. Like, sign opposed. That motion appears to carry unanimously. Mr. Sanders, would you take care of the roll call for us?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Uliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckle with absent Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Rigger?
Yes.
Mayor Skinner?
Yes.
And reporter Sanders, yes. So you have to look unanimously.
All right. Thank you, Barb. Thank you all.
Thanks, Barb.
Okay. We have several line items to discuss this evening under the police report. As you'll note, you'll see under strategic issues for discussion and our vote. As Matt makes his way to the podium, we have F one, F two, F three, F four, all to do with the police department. So he's a busy chief this evening.
Really try to escape that whole witness moniker, but shoot.
How you doing, Matt?
Sis. Good. How are you doing? Mayor, just a few things under the regular report. I have received notification that Dylan Major has submitted his letter of resignation from the police department. Officer Major will be seeking employment in the state of Mississippi. His last date with the city of Buckhannon is September 24th. His letter is included in your packet. That is timely, being that we've had a vacancy with the police department. Of course, this will make two vacancies at this point. But we do have a list, a pool of applicants, if you will, that we are currently preparing to test through this latest cycle of applications that were closed at the end of August. The test date was set for Saturday, September 28th, where the physical agility test and the written test will be given to candidates that day. So hopefully, to conclusion of here in just the next week or so, we'll have a list of candidates to submit to council to anticipate filling these vacancies. Also included in your packets tonight are the results from the year three web assessment from Kalia. This was a very thorough assessment. Typically, the assessors, as you recall, web assessments occur every year during our accreditation cycle. Accreditation cycles span over the course of four years. So we are in year three of our current cycle, which is anticipated to conclude in 2025. With each webinar, typically, an assessor will review 25% of your files. We have 180 standards, just a little over 180 standards that we're compliant with, which comprises over 2,000 uploads into Power DMS. It looks at both policies and proofs for compliance with the standards. Again, typically, an assessor looks at 25% of the standards. We have a very zealous assessor this time, and he looked at over 60% of our standards. So almost a full review occurred this last time. The one suggestion that came as a result of this most recent assessment was that we make some slight modifications to our bias policing policy to include training for not only sworn staff, but also non-s sworn staff. So in consultation with the assessor, that policy was immediately changed and put into effect. Our policy committee with Kalia just met just a couple of days ago to review these changes and other changes that came as a result of our own assessment and changes to the standards. So that policy has been changed, and acts have been taken to already train our non-s sworn staff. This will be reviewed again under our year four assessment, which is scheduled to be a quick turnaround in February, where they'll look at the remainder of the standards that have not been assessed, as well as just checking this particular standard to make sure that we're in compliance with it, which we are at this time. At that time, the year four web assessment occurs 40 days prior to the onsite. The onsite assessment will occur in March of 2025, at which point we will have assessors actually come to us and perform an assessment of the facilities as well as our operating in person. So this will close out the year four as well as the totality of the accreditation cycle, which we anticipate appearing before the commission, the Kalia Commission in Little Rock, Arkansas, next summer to stand for reaccreditation for the next four years. Mayor, the only other thing on my regular report is just noting that next month marks the six-month period of our peer liaison. As you recall, I've talked a number of times about the peer liaison program that council elected to partner with First Shore Choice Services at the beginning of this year. This has been a very successful program getting off the ground. We've seen a lot of really good outreach, a lot of success stories just in the last six months. I would like to invite our peer liaison, Erica Bennett, to come to council next month and give a report on the program, maybe highlight some of the success stories that we've seen at that point, and then hope that she comes back to council at least every six months or so and gives regular updates about the program. Mayor, that's all I have under my regular report.
Any questions for Chief Gregory?
I just have a comment. I think sometimes we, here in 2024, just take the whole Kalia thing for granted. Oh, yeah, we're fully accredited, blah, blah, blah. It's been a real, Matt and his staff have really worked hard to not only attain Kalia status, but to retain it. And our hats are all off to you. When you consider in West Virginia that there's about 220-some cities and villages and 55 county sheriffs and the state police and the DNR, all of those entities are eligible for Kalia certification. There are three out of roughly those 300 entities that have Kalia status. So our hats are off to you, Matt. You've been a real rock star with it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. You want us to go down through them in order here? Yes, sir. I have here the, under F one, we need to approve our renewal from Hart Office Solutions for the copier, and that includes the maintenance agreement as well. It doesn't appear that it has gone up. It looks like it's the same as it's been. It's $154. It includes up to 4,000 clicks. They call them at 0.12 per click, and we average 3,600 clicks, so we don't hit the 4,000. Anything over 4,000 goes to .085 in overage, but it doesn't look like we ever hit that. So this, we need to have this signed tomorrow for this renewal. So if there's no objection, it doesn't look like it's changed any. If we could, if I could entertain a motion that we approve the renewal of the lease agreement with Hart Office Solutions for the police department. That is a motion by Mr. McCollum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. I'll sign my life away on that in a second. Okay. Now we're down to F two. You want to talk to us about the police department and West Virginia Wesleyan College MOU to establish collaborative framework to enhance public safety and foster secure environments?
Yes, sir. I was contacted by John Bowman earlier this summer, who was tasked with the initiative of establishing an MOU between the college, particularly the security and safety department of the college, along with local law enforcement. This was in furtherance of Department of Education requirements that had to be fulfilled by West Virginia Wesleyan College. The MOU looks at basically a mutual agreement between our services, our shared services, when it comes to the safety and security of the students and faculty and all those that happen on the campus of West Virginia Wesleyan College. We spent a number of months going through a variety of drafts to come up with what is before you tonight. And this has been reviewed not only by my staff, but also a number of staff at West Virginia Wesleyan College. And so tonight, Mayor was respectfully seeking council's approval to enter into an agreement. And so tonight, Mayor, we're respectfully seeking council's approval to enter into an agreement of reserving this MOU with West Virginia Wesleyan College. And your authorization tonight would authorize me to sign on behalf of the city of Buchanan Police Department to be its signatory.
My comment?
Sure.
Looking at the document, if you go to page two, item D. When the Buchanan Police Department responds to incidents on campus, it is understood that security officers will be present, et cetera, et cetera. I think there needs to be a phrase added in there, "when appropriate." Incidents at Wesleyan's campus could be connected to incidents here in town or other parts of the state of West Virginia. And I don't think it's always appropriate, although it's not always appropriate for nonofficial officers to be present during interviews. I think it should just be our fellows' period in those situations. And I don't think that needs to be, I think if anything is understood when appropriate, that's a stand I'm taking on D.
Okay, any other comments?
What's your opinion on that?
No, I don't have any issues with that. As I mentioned, this MOU went through a variety of revisions between, again, our staff here at the city police department, as well as Wesleyan's staff. I know that in the revision process, a number of templates were used from other colleges and universities to really arrive at where we're at. And utilizing the verbiage "when appropriate," I think is fine. Certainly, that was really the mindset of our staff, was to make sure that, obviously, there's mutual understanding between the police department and Wesleyan staff and mutual cooperation. Again, the overall goal is the safety and security of the campus. But we also have to balance that with the priorities of our policies and the law enforcement response when it comes to a proper investigation. So I don't really see an issue with that revision personally.
I think Jack makes a good point from a law perspective.
Matt, I'd like to propose to council that we might not take action on this this evening, but maybe take action on it at our first of October meeting. I think this is, I think we'd like to read this and, you know, just make sure that we're not overlooking something that may be glaring. Would that be okay?
Absolutely.
Has the city attorney reviewed this?
I think I submitted, I think he perceived that when I submitted it to the council.
Mr. O'Neil, have you had a chance to review this MOU? It may not be.
He's coming. Yeah, I have. I have, and I find any significant intervention.
But I still agree with the mayor.
Is there any time sensitivity on the college's part with this that you're aware of? I'm just wondering, I mean, if we're just adding the two words, but if we want a close review of the entire document, that's a different situation.
I don't know specifically, Dave. I know I did inquire with Mr. Bowman the timeline, and I do recall him mentioning sometime in October. So I don't think putting this off for council's review to the next meeting in October would really break it one way.
You'll let us know if there is, right?
Yes.
Well, and unlike an ordinance, I mean, if we approve it on the third of October, it could be effective. The third of October, you know, so. Okay, if council's okay with that, I would feel comfortable, more comfortable if we
I agree.
had some time to review it.
So good.
All right.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Doesn't need a motion.
It doesn't, but we'll go ahead and entertain it. Would you amend your motion to include until the October 3rd meeting?
Until the October 3rd meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Rigger to table F2 until the October 3rd meeting, which hopefully, action can be taken. That is seconded by Mr. McCully. Any comments further on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, that motion carries unanimously. All right, now we're down to F3.
Really, F3 and F4 kind of go hand in hand, but Mayor, I can address one at each one individually.
We can, you can put them together, it's okay. If we need to take action on them individually, we can, but if you want to talk about them together, that's fine.
Okay, sure. So just a little background on the current makeup of the sworn staff, as well as the current fleet with the police department. So currently, as it stands, the city of Buchanan Police Department is authorized for 12 sworn staff. And at this point, we have 11 cruisers available for, when we're fully staffed, 12 sworn staff. And we talked about Kalia earlier, and really, one of the overarching themes of Kalia is a concept known as operational readiness. This really can be found throughout many of the standards, particularly the standards as it relates to operations within the police department. Now, normally, I would have brought this concept to present to council at the next budget session. However, the window for ordering a vehicle is right now. So we are currently, the 11 vehicles of the police department are currently under what I call the enterprise plan. And what that means is we lease all of our vehicles for a period of five years through the enterprise company at a fixed rate that is a monthly cost for each vehicle. Now, one thing that we have been able to negotiate through enterprise through this fleet, and this is something that we really began working in earnest toward in the last six to seven years. Just here, within the last couple of years, we've finally gotten the full fleet of 11 vehicles on the enterprise plan. So that means that instead of buying outright vehicles when we're ready to retire the old ones, we have a fixed rate that we pay for the vehicles, in an essence, for the entire fleet, since the whole fleet is under this plan and it's just under rotation, where we cycle out the oldest vehicles when they reach that five- to six-year mark, and we replace them with new vehicles. The window for ordering, as I said, opens in early fall. So for, just for example, the oldest three that we had in our fleet prior to tonight were 2018, 2018 model vehicles. They were cycled out. We ordered the three replacements for those vehicles last October. And just because of just the timeline to get vehicles in, and especially to get them equipped, because not only does the price that we pay include the vehicle cost, it also includes the emergency equipment. So again, this is something that we were able to negotiate through enterprise to include. So when we put lights, sirens, everything that it needs, it's consoles, barriers, all the equipment that is needed to operate the cruiser, that, instead of paying, again, like a cruiser, instead of paying a one-front, upfront, one-time cost, we subsidize that over the course of five years through the lease payment. So the monthly quote that is given to us by enterprise includes both the vehicle and the equipment cost. So the last, as I mentioned, the last three that we're currently cycling out were ordered, the 2018s that we're cycling out, we ordered their replacements in October of '23. And again, because of the timelines to get the vehicles in, the timeline to get the equipment in, plus the timeline to outfit the vehicle, we're looking at nine to 12 months before we actually get that vehicle on the road. So the newest three, we are still waiting for one to get on the road. So we have two of the three that's on the road now, and we anticipate the final one to be on the road in the next month or so, sometime in October. So the request tonight is, again, under the grand overarching vision of operational readiness as set forth by Kalia. Our proposal tonight is to, we are currently facing three more vehicles that need to be cycled out that is currently on our plan right now, two of which are regular cruisers, one of which is the K-9 vehicles. These are 2020 model vehicles that are reaching their life once this ordering period takes us through in the next year. They'll reach their end of the lease life and will be replaced by these vehicles. Our proposal tonight is to, instead of ordering three to replace the three oldest, to order four, which would allow us to have 12 vehicles for 12 sworn officers. The quote that we have from enterprise, again, we were looking at two regular cruisers plus one K-9 vehicle, which will have to be a little bit of a larger SUV, just because of the needs of the K-9 units and the equipment that that entails. We're still waiting on the quote for the K-9 vehicle, but the quote that we have for the regular cruisers is, again, Dodge Durangos, which is currently what we are putting on the road. Dodge Durangos have the quickest turnaround time and are just a little cheaper than the Fords that we were building. The current quote for a Dodge Durango is $1,023.44 per month, bringing it to an annual expense of $12,281.28. And again, we're looking at at least two of those to replace the 2020 vehicles. But our request tonight is to bring our fleet up from 11 to 12, to order three Durangos at that cost, and of course, the K-9 vehicle, which will be replaced as part of that plan as well. So this is something that, again, I would, normally would have presented to council at the budget session, but the ordering window, as I mentioned, is open now. That being said, the funds will not be, if council elects to add this 12th vehicle to the fleet, the funds would not be needed now. The funds would be needed when we actually fill the vehicle, which would be nine to 12 months from now. So very, very probable that it'll be in the next fiscal year. So to add, to order a third Durango, thus adding a 12th car to the fleet, you would look at an additional $12,281.28 to the budget. Again, that includes the cost of the vehicle and the emergency equipment. The only other cost that would be on top of that would be a one-time cost of $7,100 for the radio for the vehicle. Of course, the vehicle would also need a camera. However, we are at the, we are at the point, under our current camera plan, as you recall, we entered into an agreement with what was then WatchGuard, which then became Motorola, to acquire cameras for the whole police fleet. That was in the 2020, 2021 fiscal year. And so the sun is getting ready to set on the current plan. We made a one-time purchase and subsidized that at 0% for five years through the company. We will be speaking to other representatives, again, as the sun sets on this plan, to look at revitalizing the cameras across the whole fleet. So certainly, the needs for the camera on a 12th vehicle would be addressed as we address the outfitting of the entire fleet in the next fiscal year. So Mayor, that is my proposal for ordering an additional Durango to bring our fleet up to 12. That coincides, as I said, with F4, the take-home program. The take-home program has been in effect with the city of Buchanan Police Department since 1997. I can speak to this. I was a very new officer at the time when the late Chief Fred Gaudet began the take-home program. And so my first cruiser at that point, my first take-home cruiser, was an old Chevy Caprice that had 200,000 miles on it, and I thought I was getting a brand-new vehicle. So, but it was a take-home program that was begun by the chief at the time, by Chief Gaudet at the time. For, again, he was really a visionary, even though we didn't have Kalia back in the day. A lot of what Chief Gaudet did were Kalia concepts. And so his vision for the take-home program was to establish that operational readiness component, to make sure we had enough equipment for each of our officers to be able to adequately respond to situations, incidents, emergencies within the city of Buchanan. It's a very successful program. It was in place for a number of years until about 2016, 2017. The, there was discussion to change the policy, to maintain a take-home program, but to do so for officers who have been here for five years or more. And officers that were here less than five years were to park their vehicles at the station. So this was a program that, again, that we entered into within the last seven or eight years. And through very careful analysis, and a lot of, and a lot of the central tenets of the accreditation process is self-evaluation. You look at your policies, your procedures, you look at your operations, and you make very informed decisions on what works, what doesn't work, what could be changed. And this is one of the programs that has underwent very careful evaluation by my staff, particularly our administrative staff, and really arrived at the conclusion that the current policy of parking the vehicles for officers less than five years isn't as effective as what it was once thought to be. I know that the original thought was to save money on mileage and gas. And really, I think if there's any savings, it's very, very negligible when it comes to that, especially given the fact that we do require our police officers to live within 10 air miles of the public safety building. So there is a residency requirement when it comes to our employees. But really, our overarching concern had to do with operational readiness. Because if you look at our current staff of officers with less than five years, that's almost 50% of the police department. So almost 50% of our fleet is being parked at the police station. And really, the concern with that is that, obviously, as a small department, particularly in emergency situations, we have to rely on emergency call-outs of our employees to respond to emergencies, whether it be a big fire downtown, whether it be, God forbid, an active shooter that would occur anywhere in our locale, maybe a major investigation that's occurring. We do rely on emergency call-outs of our officers. And the concern with parking vehicles is that it enhances our response time to the emergencies. So much so that it's quite possible that an officer responding on an emergency call-out in his private vehicle could realistically pass the emergency in his vehicle to drive down and get the police car and then drive back to the emergency. So obviously, that would delay the response and cause concerns from a Kalia perspective for operational readiness. The other concept, the other benefit that I have found with having a take-home program is the maintenance of the vehicles. And I can, again, attest to this, going back to the patrolman that I was in 1997 with a take-home car, that when officers take the vehicles home, opposed to leaving them parked for a number of hours a day when they're not on duty at the police station, but when they take them home, they're much better cared for. And in a lot of circumstances, they're just in a better position as far as not all being lumped together in one area. So our recommendation with that, Mayor, would be to revisit the policy and to lift the policy and to allow the take-home program to commence with all officers, beginning with the completion of the field training program. And again, this is under the, in the vein of operational readiness and proper emergency response.
Okay. Counsel, you've heard the recommendation and request from Chief Gregory. Chief and I spoke about this last week. And I do think we're, I think we can all kind of relate to this, is how many interviews do we do for police officers? And, you know, every department is looking for a way to advance themselves, to make them more. make them more attractive than the neighboring department. While I was sitting in traffic yesterday in Morgantown, thanks to the accident on I-79 southbound, trying to, trying to navigate the backroads to get back on 79 at exit 139, there was an ad on, about, on the radio for Fairmont City Police looking for hires, and they, one of the first things out of the gate was, you know, we'll get, we'll give you a cruiser right off the bat to take home. You know, we are, unfortunately, we know where we are in the region. Within an hour's drive, you can, you can work at a number of different places. We are, our geography is, is a plus, but it's also a minus in that, you know, you don't, you don't have to upgrade your family, and within an hour, you've got Morgantown, Fairmont, Clarksburg, Bridgeport, Weston, Elkins, you know, you've got a number of places that you could work, that, you know, if there is just one slight carrot that's better than ours, you know, they're gonna go. We also have sheriff's departments in all those counties as well, including our own, that can, can poach officers with, with just those deal sweeteners. So I, I support it. I think, I think it's something we need to do, and I, I think that the 12th vehicle, the timeliness of it makes sense to add it to the, to the order that we're gonna put forth in October anyway. Are there any comments? Are there any, any disagreement voices?
I have a comment. The previous mayor that had the brainchild idea for that was a cheapskate. I think we did that in 2016, didn't we? It's just callous, space, spade, right, Matt?
Well, who was that, David?
Him. It was me. Anyway, I think, I think what we were trying to do at the time was have a retention tool that too often, as we're seeing tonight with Dylan Major, they, they got that two-year thing to the day, and it's like, okay, I'm a certified cop, I did my two-year gig that I'm required to do by ordinance of the City of Buchanan, and I'm going someplace else now. I think, I think at the time, we thought it would be, okay, they're gonna get their own cruiser, and just a couple of more years after that, we dangle a carrot. But what I'm hearing Mr. Skinner say, and what I think you're relating to us, is that ship has kind of sailed, that model is, has not worked, and we need to dangle the carrot right out of the chute. And so, while, while I think it was a good idea back in 2016, I don't have any ownership in continuing what's not the best model going forward, so I would support what you're trying to do.
I would add, too, the readiness factor. I think it's the most, one of the more important elements. I would concur, that would be really a sad situation if an officer had to pass the scene of an accident to get here, to get the cruiser to get back. You know, that just, in today's world, it's all about the seconds that you can save, particularly if it's an active shooter situation or, you know, something of dire concern that had to be responded to in addition.
I see this as fitting with our initiative behind the first due, so the way a fire department is ready to deal with emergencies in the city and out, you know, and in the first year area and other parts of the county. And I see this in alignment with that totally. And, you know, one thing we didn't mention yet is the Kalia standards, and police departments being held to high standards, and we need to give them the tools and the mechanisms to do this, and so I'm all for it. I'm all for the new, the extra cruiser, and I'm all for the take-home program. Now, when you say when they passed the field test, I'm assuming that's their probationary period?
Yeah, the field training. So when an officer is hired, they go through the one-boarding process until they're placed in the academy. The one-boarding process includes some initial Kalia trainings that is required, as well as familiarization with our policies, procedures, and our local operations to include our records management system and our other databases. So that's the one-boarding process. Once they're placed in the academy, they go to the academy for 16 weeks upon graduation. They return back to a veteran officer for field training, which occurs over the course of 12 weeks. Once they are signed off on by the administrative staff and the field training officers, having successfully passed the field training process, then they are released to work on their own, at which point I would recommend that the take-home cruiser begins at that point.
Matt, are you, so, we are technically down with Dylan's resignation, two officers, and it takes a while to get an officer, as we know, fully trained and out on the street. We have enough vehicles right now. Are, is your plan to go ahead and start assigning vehicles with this approval tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, yeah. My plan would be, obviously, being down two, we have 10 on staff, so with our current fleet of vehicles, we would allow, of course, everybody's all field training within that staff, we would allow the take-home program, if council approves tonight, to commence immediately. And then, as we move into the replacement process of these two vacancies, we, the training processes I just described would occur, and we would anticipate, if we can get somebody hired to fill these vacancies this fall, our goal is to have them placed, to our understanding, the next available police academy is in January, and it would be our goal to place them in that class through, so through the course of 16 weeks. We would anticipate that they would graduate early spring and be placed on field training, that would take us through Strawberry Festival into late spring, early summer, at which points we would begin that program. So we should have, at that point, as the, as we enter into the new fiscal year, we conclude field training, we should have availability, especially if council approves the acquisition of a 12th vehicle. We would anticipate that that being, would be on the road mid to late next summer. So as, as they're available, then we would begin the take-home process for new officers.
I have one more question. Are we confident that our protocols and policies on taking a cruiser home are tight relative to the, more than the expectation? There's a public element to this. I mean, I remember back in the day, in the early eighties, when I started with the city, you could go to the grocery store, and you'd have an officer pulling in with a cruiser with the wife in the seat, and they'd go, and, you know, we don't do that anymore.
No, and that's, that's a good point that you raise. Certainly, we have very stringent policies that address the, not just the take-home program, but just the use of the vehicles in general, and personal use is absolutely forbidden per center of policy.
Well, there's another point that would also be addressed for the future, is we haven't had annexation for quite a few years, but I get calls occasionally from people that would like to be annexed, and this would be a good difference in how we're doing things now compared to what happens if our, you know, expand the city limits with annexation.
Yeah.
So I think that's something that would be very good.
Yeah, and I think, you know, obviously, one thing to, in that regard, to really tout with our operations is, is Kalia is a major benefit to the police department in terms of bringing our operations, our administrative procedures in line with best practices and professional excellence. You know, as Councilman McCauley said, only three departments in West Virginia are Kalia accredited, only 5% in the United States are accredited, so you can just consider how many police departments from coast to coast there are, were among those 5%. And so, you know, with that professional excellence brings standards and uniformity to our operations and our practices, and that really makes the, our services very unique when it comes to what we offer our residences, our residents as a result of that.
All right. I think that it's a good discussion. I think we're all supportive of the, of the initiative here. Let's take these one at a time. F3, approval to add an additional cruiser to the, to the police department's fleet through the Enterprise lease program, of which we will order here in October. Is there, it would be a total of four that we would order this October. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Motion by Jack. I think I heard Rob as a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. F4, approval of the police department implementing the take-home cruiser program to take effect immediately.
Oh.
Motion by McCauley, I think I heard a second, by Thomas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion, you, you, you dissenting?
No, I was just trying to get the motion in.
No, 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 aye, aye, aye. All right. Motion carries unanimously. All right. All right, Matt, anything else you, I think you're good.
I just have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Out of curiosity, for regular cruisers versus a K-9, what does it cost to lease a K-9? How much more?
So we're, we're still waiting on the quote for that. Currently, we're looking at getting a quote for a C-9, but again, we're just, we're not really sold on that completely. We're supporting our options, but we do know, we do desire a larger SUV, larger than the Durangos, again, because of the needs of the K-9, and because the current K-9 unit is in one of the Ford Explorers, and if you look at the K-9 compartment and the passenger, the rear passenger compartment is greatly cramped. So through experience with that program over the last five years, we definitely, it necessitates the need for a little bit of a larger vehicle.
Matt, I've been getting some phone calls occasionally about how often our police officers take a look at the, their riverwalk and so forth. Is that on a regular schedule?
Yeah, we do regular patrols throughout our city, and really, the focus of our patrols is that they are even-handed and that they are not something that you can keep a schedule, so they're, they're random. So certainly, the patrols on all of our ships, day shift, evening shift, night shift, do patrol every area of our town to include our residences or business sectors that spend a lot of time in the alleys. So very much included in that is the riverwalk, and I know that's, beyond just routine patrol, sometimes we are aware of complaints and other issues that come to our attention. So when that occurs, we do, will situationally assign direct patrols and direct responses to that area.
Well, with policing the riverwalk, are the officers in uniform at that time? Or do they, I mean, with, with the way we have technology and cell phones and everything, if a police cruiser comes up to that area, there's gonna be a lurk going with people doing things that should not be doing things.
Yeah.
So are they always in uniform? Are they always driving?
Yeah, our patrols are marked patrols. Now, we do have, we do have an officer who is assigned to the task force who is not uniformed.
Like undercover sort of?
It is, yeah. Now, his primary duty is primarily drug investigations, so there are occasions where he conducts surveillance, obviously, he's not uniformed.
I think you might want to consider that in the riverwalk area, do more undercover where the police officer will not be identified subsequently.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Have a good weekend, Matt. Have a good trip.
Where are you going? I am, uh...
Thank you, man.
Second night.
What's so funny, man?
He'll call you from the airplane. All right.
I'm going to make you some pasta.
Mr. O'Neil has deferred it down to strategic, so we will go through correspondence and information real quick. We have a FOIA request from ZIT Buffalo for vendors, purchase orders, and employee contact information, reported cat and dog activity from the County Commission for August, we have an article by the Buchanan Fire Department, this, Joey Backs penned an article that was featured in Firehouse Magazine, it's, we circulated it on our social media, you can take a look at it, well-written, it highlights the incident on Pocahontas Street from 2022. We have the City of Buchanan announcement, we entertained Ricky Franco here, she is the owner, founder, and CEO of Prime Six. She had another visit to Buchanan, we brought her down here to City Hall, she got to meet folks out here who she would be dealing with from the permitting side, and we walked her around different businesses in town, so she is, she'll be back in October. We are going to plan a town hall-style meeting, she wants to answer any questions the community might have about, about Prime Six, what it is, what impact it's gonna have on the community, and yes, they did receive a, an investment from Shark Tank. Kevin O'Leary is, is their investor, and Kevin is coming to Buchanan, he could be coming in October. So we will, we'll be letting folks know when we get closer to that, if that is gonna take place. Either way, he will be here for the ribbon cutting whenever that takes place in the fall party next year. We've set trick-or-treat in the city, I'm sorry, we have a trunk-or-treat on 10/28, which, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at Public Safety Complex, and then last meeting, we set the trick-or-treat in the city of 10/31 from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And we have the Upstate County Solid Waste Authority Free Paper Shred Event that is taking place at 395 Mud Lake Road, that is across the street from the transfer station, that's our street garage, that will be Saturday, September 28th, that's next Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. It is a free event sponsored by the Solid Waste Authority. And then, at our waste board earlier this month, we announced that we would have Make It Shine at the transfer station, that's back across the street, 444 Mud Lake Road, that'll be Saturday, October 19th, 7:30 a.m. to 3 o'clock p.m. That is our, we, we used to do it in the spring, but we found better success in the fall, so got stuff to take out the transfer station, mark your calendar for October 19th, that's a Saturday. Under the consent agenda, we do not have an E1, we need to break out E2 and E3, however, so I entertain a motion that we approve our building and wiring permits.
Sure.
Motion by Mr. Sanders, is there a second? Second by Mr. Zuliani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Like, sign opposed, noting Mr. Rigger's abstention, and then I'd ask for a motion to approve the payment of our bills. Is there a motion to that effect?
Sure.
Motion by Thomas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rigger, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Okay, we are down further to strategic issues for discussion and our vote, we have dispensed with one, two, three, four, and six, leaving us five, seven, eight, and nine. We have an approval of a resolution, this is, does not have to do so much with finances, but this is 2024-10, and it's to execute the agreements to support the Design Phase One of the Morton Avenue Sidewalk and Lighting Transportation Alternatives Project. Jay, and Jerry, and Ethan have been working on this, has been reported several times at city council meetings, this is just the resolution to support that project. Is there a motion to that effect?
Sure.
We have a motion by Mr. McCauley, a second by Mr. Thomas, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. It is a resolution, so I'll defer to Mr. Sanders for the roll call, and then we'll have you all sign it.
The order of this one is Mayor Skinner.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders votes yes. Mr. Buckland, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rigger?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Zuliani?
Yes.
So this one does not have circles, this is one you have to sign under the in favor or under the opposed, so make sure you sign on the left-hand side of that for in favor. Send that down the line. Okay, so that's, that's...
We'll deal with you afterwards.
Okay. F5. Okay, now we are down to F7. Mr. O'Neil has taken the podium, but we learned earlier today that we still are waiting on some, some information from the test, do they have everything from us? If you want to take it from there.
With respect to the, with respect to the survey, they have all the information they need, the centerline designated of the walk trail, the parcels involved, and so on. They will be preparing the survey, the survey, the width, as we discussed previously, it will take in the, the base of the trail itself, as well as the benches, and I, I trust that they will do it with, with speed, but I do not have from them an estimate on when it will be done. So it is, it is in process, I think it's in good hands, and, and so for that reason, I, I suggest that we take that order.
Okay. Is there, we don't necessarily need to do this, but... Is there, we don't necessarily need to do this, but keeping consistent with above, is there a motion to table this until the documents are prepared?
Sure.
We have a motion by McCauley, second by Thomas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Tom, while you're there, I should have put this in a better order. Let's go ahead and do ordinance 471 while you're at the podium, and then we'll go back and talk about F8.
Sure. Mayor, the council has before ordinance number 471 of the City of Buchanan. I understand that it's the intent of you and the council to just bring.
Insert this draft.
Right.
Yeah.
So just to preface, so that members of council have the text in front of them. When I began drafting this proposed ordinance, I did so to create a new, create essentially a new fire fee for the first due area I went through and modeled. That ordinance on those from Elkins, Bridgeport and Weston got well into the process and realized that I think I was making it a little more complicated than it needed to be. Because the city already has a fire fee, and what the intent of the council from our conversations is to just apply that very same fee both inside the municipality and in the first due area outside of the municipality. So the draft that you have before you today is a relatively simple ordinance where it references the fire fee created in ordinance 467 that has already been enacted. And what ordinance number 471 does, it takes the very same fee, the same structure, and just applies it to the first due area as defined by the State Fire Commission and the Fire Marshal. It does a couple of other things in there, and I'll walk through each article and just kind of explain this. But just for purposes of this discussion, this draft that you have before you does not set rates. Because again, the rates are already set by ordinance 467, and we're just taking the provisions of that ordinance and just applying them to a broader geographic area. So that's what Article 1 does. First of all, obviously, we have the title and just basic whereas clauses citing the city's authority to do what the ordinance does and the reasoning of the city behind that, including the growth of, of costs associated with providing fire protection, the fact that fire protection within the first due area has been heretofore underwritten by the residents of the city, and that it's the intent of the council to come up with a financing system for the fire department that is more equitable than the current practice. So after the enacted clause, we have Article 1, which is the operative language that does what I described, takes our existing fire fee and just expands the geographic area that it applies to, as well as providing that all of the provisions of that ordinance 467 with respect to the administration, the responsibilities delegated to the Director of Finance and so on, similarly will apply to fees collected and administered for this first due area. Article 2 is some foundational language regarding the dedication of any revenues generated through the fire fees to the fire department, which is a requirement under state law. Fees collected cannot be used for any other municipal purpose besides funding the fire department, and that's contained in the ordinance. And it recognizes that owners of real property in the first due service area are the users and beneficiaries of the fire service provided by the city. And that's important because it's that language and state code that empowers the city to collect this fee from non-residents of the city because it is not a tax, it is a fee for service, and the service is fire protection. And as was discussed in the public meeting a couple of weeks ago, the State Supreme Court recognizes that the city is entitled to be compensated for the provision of services such as fire protection. We have to define the first due service area, and we do that by reference in Article 3. We do that by reference to the first due service area as defined by the State Fire Commission and the State Fire Marshal. Again, Article 4 Administration just similarly empowers the Director of Finance or whomever else, I suppose the council could designate, to exercise the same administrative functions with the fees collected in the first due area as she already does within the municipal limits. Article 5 does do something kind of unique to our fire fee system. That is, it creates what's called the Fire Service Fee Appeal Board. I included that in this draft because every municipality in our area that I referenced for this, Elkins, Bridgeport and Weston, have each established such a board. The purpose of this board, which would be in this draft, and again, this is a draft that's subject to change the will of the council, five-member board, the Director of Finance as a member, the Fire Chief as a member, the City Attorney as a member, one member of the City Council selected by the council, and one at-large member of the public who resides in the first due area. The purpose of this appeals board is not to entertain arguments from property owners that they shouldn't be charged a fire fee, it's to give them an opportunity to petition for redress because of the assessment of the fee. For instance, if the fee were to be at some point based on square footage of the property being served, and there was a dispute over what that square footage actually is, this fire appeal board could convene, listen to that complaint, and then make a determination based on the facts and the ordinance in order to make sure that the individuals who are paying this have an outlet to have their concerns heard and addressed. Those with respect to the board, the three, I'll call them ex officio members of the board are, would serve during the pendency of their appointment by the city to their positions, again, Director of Finance, Fire Chief and City Attorney. The other two would take effect, would hold their seats from whenever they were appointed until June 30th of each year, at which time those seats would be subject to reappointment by the council. And it also provides that any appeals or protests of the way the fire service fees are calculated in this ordinance must be filed within 30 days or they'll be deemed waived. The reason for that is we don't want to get into a situation where somebody a year down the road, all of a sudden comes and says, oh, I think you're miscalculating my fire fees. Reimburse me, you know, if they're correct, reimburse me for the last year that I've been paying. If there is a, if there's an adjustment that needs to be made based on the facts, that that's going to be a 30-day look back period. And then finally, Article, well, not finally, but Article 6, miscellaneous provisions, it just establishes, just some legal boilerplate, just establishes that these fees are debts due to the city. The city can take collection action in magistrate or circuit court if necessary. These are the same, these are the same powers that the Upstate County Fire Board enjoys now with respect to the ability to collect on the fees, and the city itself now with its own municipal fire fees can do this. It clarifies that owners of the real property and not residents or tenants are the parties responsible for payment. Ownership as those, as those records appear in the public records, the public land records of the county. And it also clarifies that if there are any changes in ownership, that those property owners are responsible for notifying the city of changes to their, to their ownership so that those, those bills, those fees for service can be appropriately. Finally, severability, the general severability clause in the event that this ordinance was challenged in court, and it establishes finally in Article 8, an effective date of January 1st of 2025. Just as a reminder, the city charter requires that all ordinances take effect 30 days after final passage. But you can set an effective date that is later than 30 days unless there's emergence, I don't want to get too down a rabbit hole here, but you can set an effective date that's not just the 30 days in an instance where you're raising revenue and want to start kind of an even, you know, start with the, start of a new calendar year, it makes sense to do that. That is the ordinance. Again, it's pretty straightforward, simple ordinance. Now, I will just mention for purposes of discussion that there's been some talk about recalculating in the rates that are charged in ordinance 467. If it's the council's intent to do that, my intent would be to have that separate ordinance ready for the next meeting in two weeks, and that these two ordinances would proceed down a parallel path.
That was my question. We can, we can take these up simultaneously.
Oh, yes, yeah, absolutely.
This would be a three reading ordinance.
It is.
Revenue generating.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. There was some question on social media last time about why one, an ordinance we took up on second reading was final last time and not, it didn't go to a third reading is because it did not have anything to do with revenue. If it's a revenue generating ordinance, it's three readings plus a public hearing. If it's a, if it's not a revenue touching ordinance, it's two.
My understanding is that the review is going to be based on, on the first, for the city, fire fee is going to be based on enterprises, businesses, square footage versus revenue production. Is that correct, Bob?
Well, that's the conversation we've had up here at the council level, and I think, I think we're all in favor of it, and we've directed our city attorney to work on a revision for, to bring that, to make that a policy moving forward, as he said, with the two ordinances moving in together.
And I'll need a little bit of, I'll need some kind of final direction from the council as to what, what those rates are going to be and how they're going to be calculated. Different kinds of structures need to be accounted for. You have single family, you got duplexes, you got multifamily residential like apartment buildings, you've also got mixed-use properties where some are, and then you got commercial. And those mixed-use properties can have some element of residential and some element of commercial, and you've got all, all commercial. So what I'd suggest is that a subcommittee be identified to meet probably next week to hammer out the precise details of what those rates are going to be, because I don't want to, I can't make those decisions on your behalf, and I just, I need a little direction and, and even informal direction so that we can, we can put something in writing that is going to meet with your expectations.
I have a question. We have not, as a council, formally resolved to change the structure of the commercial properties from gross revenues to square footage. Could we do that tonight under the element of approval of ordinance 471 even though we're tabling the actual ordinance?
Is that a question for me?
Yes.
I don't think so, but I don't think you need to, because I think the, I think the instruction, even the informal instruction, I think is enough for me to draft an ordinance. The mayor can put it on the agenda, have it properly noticed and just take it up in two weeks.
As part of October 3rd. Well, square footage, like, is a much. Well, I would add, you're going to have some people out there within the city, forget the first due area, within the city, as soon as they hear square footage, oh my God, my rates are going to go, they're going to be 10 times what they used to be.
Some determination of how to calculate is important.
It's commercial, but it's not residential.
Tammy, would you like to let us know what your survey showed?
Yeah, the chamber surveyed its members, and out of the two, I asked our members which they would prefer to be based on, and I got 100% of the answers came back as square footage from our members.
With the chamber members.
Thank you.
I do want to make note quickly, too. When we put forth the ordinance to, ordinance 467, to increase the fire and police fees within the corporate limits, that was not the first time that we ever, that the calculation rate was based on gross revenue. It's always been that way. And, and so that, the reason why we've gotten some pushback is because it's an increase, and some folks were not reporting correctly. We simplified the form, we changed the form, and so we got some, we got some answers back that then triggered a much higher rate than what they were previously paying. And so then they asked questions and a few of them got upset. But, and I appreciate the chamber's proactive survey and asking what people, what the business community would like to have, you know, and I want to point to, when, when the first fire fee and the first police fee ordinances were drafted, we didn't have such technology as the GIS site. We have a really good Upstate County GIS site. We can get square footages, accurate square footages. It's not going to be a question based on the data that is provided to us. That data wasn't available to us when these, when these ordinances were first drafted, when the fees were first put in place. So we really didn't have another mechanism to go with except for a gross revenue model. And we're talking about back into the, back into the 80s. And, and so now that we have the technology, we have the ability to go and get the square footages and make it very accurate. It takes the subjectivity totally out of it. We know what, how large the buildings are. We can, we can base what's online with what is turned in to us to validate what's, what is, what is, what are the square footages of each building. So it is a much, much, much better model to go with. And as Tom noted, we don't need to sit up here tonight and determine what the rate's going to be and for, and for what, and we need, we need to get some people together, have maybe some business community representation, have some fire department representation, have us representation to sit down and put together what that rate needs to be so that it can be included in the ordinance. So that's, I think, where we are.
And may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Under that process, I would suggest that we do it simply by setting a time for the meeting and inviting anyone who would like to offer some thoughts on it to have an opportunity to voice their opinions at that, at that meeting.
Yeah, sure. I just think it's, we want to be extra careful that the folks in the city who have commercial establishments, we're not doing a sleight of hand. Wait, you just gave us increase a couple of months ago, and now you're going to do another increase based upon my square footage?
Yeah, it's not going to increase. Yeah, I think the square footage is going to result in probably lower rates overall for a lot of.
So we will, we will push that through the media, that that's what's coming, you know, that change. But again, I can tell you, I got a lot of calls about the gross revenue model, even though it had already been in place.
Since 82.
But it was.
Since 1982.
Right, it had already been in place, and people were, they were just upset, you know, about that, and they overwhelmingly said square footage. Now, will 100% of the people come back and say that the way to do it? No, no, there's somebody going to have 100, 100,000 square feet out there that makes a couple bucks a year, but they just happen on one square footage.
And that's exactly why I didn't include rates in this ordinance, because with the, with the knowledge that you're also already looking at that, and with the council's already expressed intention to charge a single rate inside and outside the city and not discriminate based on location.
Well, we want to level playing field.
Well, since we've done this on all others, you want a motion to table this matter?
Before, I'm sorry, but I've heard any direction modification of this, I'd like to see.
Honestly, just, just, I think, I think using the word table with this is going to send the wrong message. I think this is a draft. We have an opportunity to continue to make changes to it, and we will take this up on first reading with the modification of ordinance 467 concurrently at our October 3rd meeting. I think that's probably the better way.
And there's a nice symmetry there, because that ordinance will be ordinance 472, and that way you've got ordinance 471 and 472 that are kind of twin ordinances that are going to go through the process concurrently with each other and, and have a single uniform structure throughout the entire first due area, inside and outside the municipality.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. As far as indexing, the charter and all the ordinances, where are we at on that?
Codification?
Yeah.
Is that what you're referring? I need to follow up with Drain, Walter Drain Company, that's, I'll, I'll have something prepared for you. have something prepared for you for the next report on that.
Thanks, sir.
And this, this took a great deal of time the last couple of weeks, so.
Well, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's what I'm, it's what I signed up for. Our final line item this evening is F8, and we've received a meeting, a request for a meeting, this time from the Upstate County Fire Board. We, the last request was from the Upstate County Firefighters Association, they are different. The Fire Board is, is the, is the group responsible for allocating the county fire fee money to the fire departments that is raised through the fee, the fee structure that is in place at the courthouse. They have requested that we have a meeting regarding the first due fire protection service fee proposed ordinance. What, what saith the council?
I'll begin the discussion, it doesn't necessarily have to be the entire council, but I do feel from the very beginning of this discussion that we invited input from various organizations who had a vested interest in this, and for us not to entertain this meeting, you know, I don't think would be appropriate, I think we should absolutely entertain a meeting with them, whether it be with, with the entire council or a smaller portion of council to hear, you know, their discussion points. It's not, it's not, I, I will say this, if somebody walks in and says, you know, we wanted this meeting just to say can we hold off for a year, can we hold off for six months, that's not going to, that's not going to happen, you know, this is, process is started, and the process is going to continue. But if there's some discussion that they want to have, we, I strongly feel we need to entertain those discussions.
I think we should have the entire council, not just a couple.
I disagree. Here's, here's the reason for my disagreement, I think it sends the wrong message. Mr. Skinner just mentioned the, the careful approach on 471, that we're not tabling anything, we're continuing this process. If we have a special meeting of the full council, anybody could come to that special meeting and ask to be heard. We already had the special meeting out at Brushy Ford, and coming out the next day or two when we had our last regular meeting after that special session, I think it was Mr. Sanders who said, alright, we're not going to, okay, we'll continue to talk to anybody who wants to talk about this, but we're not going to revisit it as a body in toto. So, I'm, I'm just afraid that we'd be sending the wrong message if we, we're going to have a special meeting of the full council and we're going to revisit potentially everything that anybody wants to say. I, I think it's a great idea to meet with the Fire Board. And if JB and Mr. Skinner and maybe Mr. Sanders, if, if you could have like a subcommittee of council and not make this a special city council meeting, that would be the way to go. Their, their letter says they've got questions. So, remember, this is, the, the fire, this Fire Board is an entity, a subentity of the county commission.
That's right.
So, they, they really ought to be inquiring with the entity that they answer to, which is the county commission. So, that's, that's, that's the reason I think we need to be very careful with this. I, I'd rather not have the full council, I, I think it'd be more appropriate to appoint a subcommittee of council with JB Kimble, and that would be the way to handle it.
Why even meet with them?
Well, I, I think, I think Randy was very careful with the last comment, the last meeting to say, we're happy to talk with anyone.
They're different, David, the, the Fire Association is who we met with last time, that is, that is the Association of Chiefs, they, they're the, what they do is they, they meet once a month and talk about each department and how each department can work together, hey, we want to buy this, maybe you all don't need to buy that, kind of thing, that's, that's just their, that's, that's just their, like, their, their, their monthly meeting just to kind of get together and talk. The Fire Board is different, the Fire Board is who is respons, is a. Mr. McCollum is right, it is a created body by the county commission to solely work with the fire fee money that is raised. It is the body that then, it, it distributes the money to each department through the year.
So, they report to the Upstate County Commission, they're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Because I, I'll tell you the truth, I was really upset two, two, three weeks ago when Mr. Nolte did what he did in that meeting. It was totally inappropriate. And he waited till the end when all of us had the opportunity to say our comments, and then he jumps up and starts spouting a bunch of stuff that wasn't true. And he called me the next day, and I've known Sam for a long time, and I was totally unhappy. That's why some people thought it was inappropriate trying to, I wanted to shut him down, because he should have not been able to talk anymore at all. He had his opportunity and he didn't do it. And he waited till we all made our comments at the end, and then he started saying, well you have the sales tax, you still are going to use all that money for the police and the fire department? We never said that to him, ever, to anybody. So, that's how I feel. So, I, if, if you want to meet with the Fire Board, that's fine, and we don't have to do it as whole council. But I, I think, you know, I made a comment in that meeting, that when I ran for city council X amount of years ago, I believed in two things very strongly, transparency, you share the facts and figures with everybody, and if they don't agree with the decision you made, that's okay, but at least they have the facts and figures, you don't hold anything back. And I also believe treat people the same, a level playing field, and the first due people are getting the same operations that the residents do, I think they should pay the same. So, that's where I'm coming from anyway. Sorry.
Mr. Skinner, can I, can I say one other?
Sure.
The, the letter from them is two sentences, and these are the two sentences, just so we're clear on what they want. "The Upstate County Fire Board is requesting a meeting with city council to discuss forthcoming decisions with the first due ordinance. Many decisions on our part cannot proceed without a discussion regarding general and legal questions and a path moving forward." So, I would, I would suggest that in addition to Mr. Skinner, Mr. Sanders, G. Kimble, Tom O'Neill.
Thanks.
It's not a special meeting of the entire city council, but the city council is represented at this meeting that we would have with the Fire Board.
Good point, Dave.
Okay, I'll, I'll, thank you.
Sure. Just want to keep you busy, Tom. There goes your Christmas card.
Well, so, here's, I mean, I, again, this, this, this process is long, we did not read this on first reading tonight, it will be on first reading October 3rd, we've got three readings to go from there. I mean, I don't know that we have to hurry up and have that meeting with the Fire Board like next week, I mean, I think we can, we can, we can try to find the time to, to, that works for everybody, so that we're not looking like we're trying to just rush, 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 I mean, it, we, we're, at best, we're at the first of the year anyway with this. So, I mean, and at any time, I mean, just because it's past, I'm not saying this is going to happen, and the likelihood is low, but, I mean, council has a right to say even on its third and final reading, we don't want to do it. And that's with anything, that's with any, I mean, any ordinance can get to its final reading and council could just say, we've had a change of heart, we don't want to do it. I think you've noted it's happened before. So, I mean, this, just because we've started this process does not mean it's a done deal. I mean, we still, as the conversation took place tonight, we still have a lot that we have to, to, to get together, we have a lot of information we have to put together to make this a finished product, we're not, we're not there yet. So, you know, why don't, why don't we just, why don't, why don't, why don't we think about this and we can, we can respond back to the Fire Board after we've had some time to, to, to decide who wants to go and, and, and what, what that magic number is, and I do agree, I do think Tom O'Neill should be there, because if there are legal questions that need to be.
Always, always going to be.
Answered.
I would say I think a timely response to this.
Sure.
Necessary, and if we're, if we're, if we're going to take our time in setting a date, we need to inform them tomorrow.
I agree with that.
You know, in a formal letter.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's what we're going to do.
That makes sense.
I agree with that, but I don't think that we should be in any hurry to have to say, oh, we'll, we'll, we'll meet, we'll meet next week, you know, so, but I agree with you, I, I think just letting them know that we'll, we will, we'll work it out in our schedules to see where we can do it. All right, we are down to council comments and announcements. I would ask that you keep, council, I should have done this at the very beginning, I would just ask that you keep Council Lady Buckley in your thoughts and prayers, she had a surgery over the weekend and is recovering, so keep Pam in, in your thoughts and prayers. We'll start with Mr. McCollum.
I know, I sound like an old pastor instead of an old attorney, but when you think about what, again, what the city does as an organization, and it's timely because of all the political ads, you can't turn the darn baseball game on anymore without, you know, been hearing it from all sides. When you weigh everything that the federal government does for you, and everything that the state government does for you, and then you look at the local government where the issues really matter, you need a police officer, you need a fire truck, you need your garbage picked up, you need clean water, you need to know where, when you flush the commode, things are going to work okay. All of this, all of these quality of life things, they don't happen in Washington DC or Charleston, West Virginia, they happen in places like right here, and we just happen to be the seven mouthpieces for this terrific organization that does all these amazing things. So, I, I just don't want us to lose sight of the fact that we're very different from federal, state, and county government. We do these things day in and day out, seven days a week, and I, we, we should, we're very beholden to our employees that discharge all those functions, that's all I got.
I agree, thank you, sir. Mr. Rigger?
I want to commend Chief Gregory on this important presentation of the defense department, all very, very well done, Mr. O'Neill. Probably I didn't have a chance to congratulate you on your marriage.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations.
Half the time I forget to wear my ring, don't tell Lauren.
We're not large tonight, so.
My son got a tattoo, the new cruiser. So anyways, I think that's good, and purchasing the, the new cruiser, the additional cruiser, and allowing officers to take the vehicles home, I think that's a, a good move. We're a responsive city, and in times of crisis or emergency, you know, we want to respond as quickly as we can, so I'm really grateful council approved that. It's good to see everyone, and Dave, I, I do know this, talking to Mr. Sanders, I think of that sales tax. Randy, could you refresh my memory, how much goes to fire department, how much to police? It's significant, is it not?
Could you, could you repeat that again out of the air?
How much of the sales tax is going to the fire and police department?
Well, so, in our general fund budget, it's 57% of our general fund budget is dedicated to police and fire.
Yeah, so, any questions about the sales tax, it's being utilized purposefully to serve the citizens of the community and to take care of our employees, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thomas?
I appreciate everybody this evening and their comments and their ideas and so forth, and Tom and Matt, thank you very much. I would like to alert citizens to one thing, about half hour, 45 minutes before I came here this evening, I got a phone call, and it sounded like maybe somebody I knew, but it was, I'm calling for your utilities, and we think you've been overpaying, and we want to send you some money, but we also want to send you on to an agent that will talk to you about getting a 35% discount. And I mentioned this a couple council meetings ago, be very careful when you answer the phone, oftentimes a person on the other end wants you to say yes. I've been getting a lot of calls about, oh, Medicare has just adopted something that is extremely positive for people who have the AB, and do you have that? Well, I don't say yes, but I've been getting probably in the last four months, 100 phone calls about the same thing. A person named Mary or Suzie or so and so and so and so, and I say, well, your voice sounds wonderful, could we go out on a date? They hang up on me. But, that's just a little joke there. But be very, very careful when you say something on the phone, because a lot of people are there scamming us, and I also think they pick on older people. So, be careful, that's all.
On that, Rob.
Thanks, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Zilliani.
By the way, congratulations, Rob.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'm glad that Chief Gregory is here tonight, and I had mentioned this before in a planning or, or works, public works meeting, we are getting bombarded on, I'm getting bombarded on Smithfield Street with the continuing problem of the pickup and drop off lines at Academy, now that the pickup is instructed to go all the way down Smithfield Street. Someone, I think it was last week, had an emergency with a pet and couldn't get their car out of their driveway, just the people that park, and again, we talked about it and made light of it, but it was actually not funny, but some of the people in the pickup lines start parking two hours before school gets out. And I know we talked about it before, and a good way to approach it was possibly not having a fire engine be able to get through, an ambulance be able to get through, but they make it so it's almost gridlock of the intersection. And I just don't know what, I know some people have approached that subject with the school and the principal said that it's out of her hand, yeah, she doesn't know how to handle it, that's what she's told to do, how, do you have any suggestions or?
This, this has been a problem that existed really since the, the newest iteration of the Buchanan Academy School. I know that the, the current makeup, as you speak up tonight of the pickup line coming down Smithfield Street was at the suggestion, you know, and we met with, with staff, with the board office as well, Buchanan Academy Elementary School, considering the concerns that we had last year and historically speaking, and one of the main concerns last year was the, the pickup line would come down as it has for, for a number of years, down Victoria Street, and then turn onto that last block of Smithfield Street before entering the loop with the Academy School. And really started seeing it as a problem within the last couple of years.
Because it wasn't.
And, and as far as the backup, leading out on Route 20, and people coming to a standstill on Route 20 and blocking traffic. So, in, in light of these concerns and the complaints that we got in regards to that particular makeup, discussions continued with, again, with staff, with the board office in terms of looking at different models. And one of the suggested models was to, to alleviate the backup on Route 20 was to take them down, turn, instead of turning on Victoria Street, actually go all the way down, I believe in Lincoln Street, and come up Smithfield Street and have that approach. So, you know, as far as Route 20 goes, it has definitely alleviated the congestion on Route 20, but certainly it's really just transferred it to Smithfield Street. And really, a, a lot of us, I, I know upon my own examination of, of the current makeup, as long as they're not blocking intersections or driveways, which are not supposed to do, when they're waiting in line, I know many of the vehicles will, will park to the right side of the road like they're in a parking place. That appeared to be actually a lot more efficient than what we were seeing in the last couple of years. Now, certainly if they're blocking driveways, blocking intersections.
Yeah, they are blocking driv, I mean, the ignorance level of the people picking up the kids, they don't care, and they won't move, and they're, they're bumper to bumper so they can't move, and they just stare at you and.
Yeah. So, that was the, I already said the current solution, I mean, certainly, do you know if any of the concerns have been shared at the board office beyond the, the morning?
I mean, I'm, I'm wondering if that's what my question is maybe, is just to ask, how should we approach it? Should I go talk to them, should we, you know, is it a safety issue, that, would they get more?
Yeah, or something should be done.
So, I talked to Christine Russ about it again, and they acknowledged the problem, and we, we're, we have a, we have a, not a date set, but a, a promise to sit down and talk and look at a map and what can be done. I did. I did mention again, because Jerry and I went and met with them last year about the issue, and mentioned that, you know, before they became part of the administration, the city partnered with the Board of Education to tear down properties adjacent to the... To both board office and Academy School. And the plan was to try to rework an area for pickup and drop-off, to try to keep things flowing. You know, those two houses across from Mike Sharbaliski at the corner of Mount Street were... Not only were they in ISOR, but they also were properties that could be beneficial to creating a better loop through there. But, you know, I know they've had a lot on their plate, understandably so, but, you know, for the residents of that neighborhood, I get... I came up through there, I had... I was going to go and get papers signed by a customer, and came up through there at like 10:03 on like a Tuesday afternoon, and I didn't think about it. I came right up Hart Avenue, and I'm like, "What is going on?" And I thought, "Oh, this... I'm never here. I don't live here. I live in South Buchanan. I don't live here, and I'm not here during the day because I'm at work, and I can't... And I could not... I could barely get through the intersection of Hart and Smithfield to go up toward Chapel Hill. And if you look both ways, it's gridlocked. They're almost parked... They're parked everywhere. They're almost parallel with each other, treating it like it's a one-way street. I mean, it's... It is... It's... I mean, it's kind of the Wild Wild West through there, and so we do need to figure out something. But, you know, I mean, more than ever, the bus system is not being used. I saw a comment on social media earlier this week about, "Why is traffic so bad?" I know that arguments can be made for high school kids driving themselves to the high school. I get that. With sports and extracurriculars, I was one of those that drove myself to the high school, and my brother, and cousins, and... But we all, we drove to the high school when we were old enough to do so. But, I mean, elementary school, absolutely, I feel like could use the bus system.
Yes.
And when you have an urban school, like what we do, that's... And I don't mean urban as in like that's the makeup, it's just it's situated in an urban area. It makes it... It taxes and stresses the neighborhood quite a bit. Because, I mean, the high school has a large footprint. The middle school is a bigger footprint. Tenerton is not located amongst all these homes, and Tenerton has a large loop... It's smaller schools. I mean, Tenerton Elementary is a small school. There's 700 kids at Academy School. So, I mean, that's 700 kids' families trying to come in and pick them up, and seemingly all 700 need to be picked up. So it's... I've seen it firsthand a few weeks ago, and I was blown away by it.
Yeah, a lot more observations in examining this issue, as the mayor stated, and this has been shared with, or discussed with, the folks that are responsible for safety and security primarily, and the board office in general. But perhaps this can be continued conversations, and that is looking for opportunities with the property of the Cannon Academy itself to maximize space to queue these cars and allow them into the queue a lot sooner than what they are right now, because it's creating the gridlock and the backup. So that has been an observation that we've shared, and perhaps can continue to be conversations to look at that as an opportunity.
The best solution to the whole thing. Parents cannot pick their kids up until the bus is in line. Once the buses have run, then you can have parent pickup. I don't know what else you can do unless you go back to where it was like when Suzanne Britton was there, back around 2017, 18. That seemed to work fairly well, although it would still get congested, I don't think as bad as it is now.
Both our children went to Academy, and that was never an issue. So I don't know how many more people are driving...
They changed the routes.
Right, they changed the routes. But I mean, it wasn't... I think it's a combination of changing the routes and then more people are picking up their kids. But I mean, it wasn't... And it's not like they had an influx of students, it's the same number of students that, when our kids were there.
Well, unfortunately, too, the... I mean, the school can say, which I think they tried to do, and they may even still try to do it, and say, "You can't pick up your kid until 3:20," or whatever it is. But they can't... The school has no authority over city streets. So if these people are parking on city streets, waiting until 3:20 just to get to that, to be first in line, that's what this is all about. It's to get there early enough to get them out and get out of town, or get out of the area quickly. But if the school's saying, "You can't come here until 3:20," or whatever time it is, they'll just park on the closest street.
Yeah. I'm going to jump in here and say that this is not something, Mr. Mayor, that we can wait on the convenience of the superintendent's schedule loosen-up. This is an imminent situation that has to be addressed immediately. I mean, at this point, we're talking about summer. Next summer, Dr. Miller might be available to talk about it. This is ridiculous. I mean, Smithfield Street is being held hostage. I would possibly recommend Mr. Rigger being assigned to handle it, since he has a background in it. I understand that you have a relationship there, but this is absolutely absurd. And I think this is a paramount situation. The residents of Smithfield is really being subjected... Councilman McCollough just talked about the quality of life that we have in this town. We have a quality of life except for the residents of Smithfield, Monday through Friday. They do not have a quality of life when it comes to that. So I don't think... That Board of Education saying they don't have time to meet now, that's unacceptable. Absolutely unacceptable.
Well, I don't... Okay, I don't... They did not say, they didn't blow me off and say... They didn't blow me off and say we don't have time. It's just, we talked about it, we both said we needed to get this on the books, but, I mean, I'm busy too. I mean, so, I mean, we need to get a meeting together. I know we do. There's only so many hours in the day, and I know that they're busy, we're busy, we've got a lot going on here. But yes, well, I will talk to Christie, I'll text her tomorrow and find out when can we meet next week.
But I mean, this is not the first time we've heard about it.
No.
They spent that away for three weeks, though.
And Tammy has...
Is it... Are they... Do they have to be signed out, or are they just let out and they go to parents' cars?
I don't know. I don't know.
They have a process to ensure the kids...
But their process is only on school property. Outside of school property, you know...
If you had to go in and sign them out...
They don't have to go in.
But if you did, would that eliminate a lot of this parent pickup? If you had to actually get out your car?
Right, make it worse, because they'd be leaving their vehicles and walk into the school, and then if somebody needed to get in or out, their vehicle...
I figured it might eliminate...
We can't... We're not going to solve this tonight.
We're not. And I, you know, forgive me for that, but I'm just sitting here thinking, you know, I understand Christie Miller has a lot on her plate. I understand that the other folks at the Board of Education have a lot on their plate. I understand Charleston Board of Education, they have a lot on their plate because they control our schools. But my goodness, Smithfield Street should not be a parking lot every day, every day. And this is something that can't go on for the next two or three months. It just can't. I mean, you know...
Because you do literally have to plan your day around drop-offs, and you can't go grocery shopping for two hours.
Your value of your property is plummeted.
Because you can park five houses away from you, so you can't carry your groceries. I mean, it's not that this is a big deal, but it's just like, I'm just curious if there's got to be a way to alleviate it.
It is. Well, you just said somebody tried to get out with their pet and they couldn't do it. And it's a child that's got an emergency that can't get out. You think the parents would move if you had a physical need? No.
I think they would if they could, but to Rob's point, and I can't, they're this close to the next vehicle, and they can't get out until the next vehicle moves.
A few years ago, we had to take up the College Avenue parking situation. Smithfield is that on steroids. I mean, it's way worse than what College Avenue was with college kids parking in front of people's houses. This is way worse.
Well, I went down and painted tick marks. Will they come down and paint tick marks? I'll come down and paint tick marks. Okay, anything else, Rob?
No.
All right, Mr. Sanders?
Just a couple of things. I appreciate council talking about this meeting with the Fire Board. I was asked by the mayor to do an interview today with one of the television stations, so Chief Kimble and I interviewed him, and the reporter said, "What do you think the biggest obstacle is moving forward with the first due area fire fee?" And I said, "Just getting the information out there. People have questions." I've had multiple conversations. I know everybody's sitting at this desk up here. I'm sure I've had multiple conversations with constituents. And 99% of the time, it ends in a handshake, and I understand now, and I'm in support of it now, because I've been given that information. So I plead with the council not to postpone too far in the future these meetings. Let's entertain the meetings in whatever manner council sees fit, whether it's all council or an appointed portion of council, but let's give these folks an opportunity. This is a huge change in the way we're doing business. This is not just deciding if we're going to add more fire pots to Main Street. This is a huge change. So let people have their voice, that's, I think, why we're here. You know, and now that we're implementing our first due area fire fee, it affects people outside. They don't vote for us, but let them have their voice. So let's be cognizant of that as we move forward with this request. Another request, and the final thing is, it is a feel-good story. I went out to Walmart this morning, and it's all gentlemen. I didn't know who he was, he didn't know who I was, obviously, because of what he said to me. He just, as a pastor, I just said hello, and he said, "Hi, I have something for you." He handed me this lapel pin, the flag, that I chose to wear tonight. And he said, "There's no explanation needed as to why I'm giving that to you, and I would encourage you to vote." And obviously, if he knew who I was, he'd know that I probably intend to vote in every election, whether I'm on the ballot or not. But I thought that was a wonderful gesture by a gentleman who had... Didn't know me from Adam, but he just handed his flag pin to me and said, "No explanation needed." And that's why I chose to wear it tonight along with the City of Buchanan pin. So whoever that gentleman is, if you see this one as played back, thank you very much, and thank you for what you do. Day by day. So that's it.
Thanks, sir. We had a good meeting tonight. Appreciate everybody's input. I agree with you, the information is key. You know, I've had several conversations with people about the first two fire fee, and the same thing has happened. I understand, this makes sense. And shame on the people out there putting out false information. And some people are doing it deliberately, which is just... It just creates so much more additional work for those of us who are trying to do, you know, the right thing for our community. And at the end of the day, what we're really talking about here is guaranteeing that we